To you today to say thank you, thank you for your grace and for your mercy. Thank you for sparing our city. We know that all power is in your hand. At a twinkling of an eye, you can destroy the entire world. But yet you showed our city, our state, and this country grace and mercy. We thank you for that. We thank you for life, we thank you for health, we thank you for strength, we thank you for watching over our families, our friends and our loved ones. Lord, we ask that you continue to guide us. We ask that you give us a spirit of coming together, of unity, of putting aside differences, working toward common causes. We ask that you let your spirit so burn in us that others may see you in the things that we say, the things that we do, and the way that we act. Now, Lord, we know we are weak, but thou art mighty. We ask that you restore your spirit within us. Give us the strength to stand for righteousness, stand in truth, standing for the good of all this, your people. We thank you for the first responders, all of those who've come together to protect and serve. We thank you for our city workers who get out in the inclement weather, in the stress. We ask that you bless them all, guide them, keep them, and hold them in the hollow of your hand. We know you're able to do abundantly above all things we might ask. But right now, we just thank you and say thank you for your son, Jesus, who died that we might have life. These things we ask, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Proton Delco.
Present.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Pete, absent.
Here.
And Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Thank you. We don't have any presentations or proclamations today, so I'll move straight into our reports. And if you would like to start, city manager, that would be great, and then I'll follow up.
Okay. Mayor and council members, first like to thank you, Mayor, and Tim Ocknechek, our emergency management coordinator, Shaquena Nobles, who's our assistant emergency management coordinator for your tireless work over the last week. We witnessed you, the three of you and others, working probably fifteen-hour days and sleeping at the emergency management offices downtown, and we thank you very much. I also like to thank all of our city employees who worked the event. They did an excellent job before and after the storm and continue to do so today. As you know, every storm is different. And after a storm, as we do assessments, we learn what we could do better, how we can prepare for future storms, and we started that exercise. We talked about it some either Saturday morning or yesterday morning at the EOC, but we'll have an official after-action review where we can, you know, list out how we'll do things differently next time. There's always room for improvement as it relates to maybe having additional equipment on hand and so forth, but we'll, you'll be a part of that, or at least we'll provide you with those results. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tim Ocknechek, who's our, again, our emergency management coordinator, who's appointed by the mayor during these storm events. The mayor, in the state of Texas, the mayor is the emergency management director, and he's the coordinator and has an assistant. He and his assistant, again, did, in my opinion, incredible job, as well as our entire, you know, staff. It was a seamless operation. Everyone got along very, very well. Everyone was willing to chip in. Again, they were working fifteen-plus hours a day for a week. I'll turn it over to Tim Ocknechek at this point.
Thank you, and I'd like to echo too, but come forward, Tim. We had a lot of city employees working, and I just have to say this because it was so impressive to me. Yesterday, I was taking some food over to a friend who didn't have power yet, and so I was driving through her neighborhood, and I witnessed a city, I guess, solid waste worker on Sunday afternoon at about four o'clock, out picking up heavy limbs on a Sunday. And I watched him put all the limbs in the truck, then I watched him get on his hands and knees and get all this stuff out of the grass. And that just said a lot to me, and I saw that through this storm. I always see it, but even more so in this one. I think this was probably, as far as operations, with the most seamless storm that we've been through. And as the city manager said, they're all different. I mean, we have had them all different. None have been even close to being the same, but we learn from everyone, and there's certainly things we can do better. And I think over the next couple of weeks, we're not near three with our assessments yet. There's still a lot to look at. We've still got a lot of power outages, a lot of stoplights out, which is problematic because people weren't treating them like a four-way stop like they should be. But with that said, I just want to thank everyone that was out in the field and at the EOC, because once more, I think we did a really good job for our citizens. And Tim, Captain Ocknechek, thank you so much, because, I mean, I saw Chief Nymkid Saturday, and he let me know that we have the best emergency management coordinator in the state. And so that's a tribute to you, and we appreciate that. So if you'd like to just give us a report, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, I just, I would like to start with the fact that it's a team, and it's embarrassing to even have my name brought up because there's a whole lot of people down there, you know, our whole city, all departments, all employees, partners, people, you know, the program's been built for a long time, it's had a lot of experience, unfortunately, in this incident. So it's really a team effort, and we appreciate that. We appreciate y'all being so supportive. So with that said, to try to keep on track and touch on some high points, I'll go ahead and read this, if that's okay with y'all. National Weather Service, you know, was tracking this storm. Y'all heard the forecast tracks. Every time there was a new forecast track, it went, you know, right or left quite a bit, a whole state different. When it started tracking in on us, it was, it started with Marco, and then as Marco fizzled out, Laura switched over where it was potentially going to impact us. We got a call late one night that there was a significant jog in the storm as it came off of Cuba, and it made it pretty clear that there was going to be impacts to this region. In fact, you know, there was some extreme concern that it was going to be a catastrophic event. We met regionally, virtually, and the emergency management officials and the elected officials all agreed that we just had to do a mandatory evacuation. That began, was going to begin 6:00 AM Tuesday morning. Tropical force winds from Laura were expected to begin early Wednesday morning, and for over a day, it lasted that it was supposed to be, you know, onset of those winds would be at 8:00 AM. And that's significant because we don't want anybody driving in winds that could potentially, or water that could potentially either roll the car, flood the car, or knock the car over. The bigger the vehicle, the more, or the less wind resistant it is. So, you know, we have a plan that calls for certain speeds, and we have to protect even the first responders. Their vehicles are just as impacted by winds as anybody's. So a decision was made. Traditionally, it takes us thirty-two to forty-eight hours to evacuate the citizens. We didn't have that much time, and we add to it the COVID concerns, recommendations of social distancing, and all the different things that we've had in place for six months now. We had to keep those in place, yet safely evacuate all the citizens. So to do it in the best time we've ever done would be hard to believe. Unfortunately, we had sort of a lethargic responsiveness to the mayor and the judge's order to evacuate. We estimate that probably eighty percent of the population remained in town, even when the news all were saying, an unsurvivable catastrophic event, which is, you know, concerning, but there was a lot of factors in this, and we're not going to go into that now. But at the same time, you know, we have a emergency assistance registry that we manage. Over the summer, it was heavily assessed. Every single person was called, reaffirmed their need to be on that list, some type of special functional need that required our assistance. And each one of those over eight hundred citizens was called before the evacuation started to make sure that, you know, do they still want to go? Do they still need help? Did they get a ride? Whatever. So even with that, we only had about eight hundred and thirty citizens show up at our assembly sites. We had about eighty-eight people that we went and picked up or facilitated being evacuated, and we sent those people through the state process to, you know, points that ranged mostly the I-35 corridor. And that happened throughout Wednesday. The mayor's curfew was going to go into effect at dusk, and that gave us dusk to dawn, and that gave us some time. We knew that the damages were going to really impact everything. The storm overnight, which we're very fortunate, jogged slightly eastward just before landfall, and that put us on the west side of the track. And as you know, that's usually where you have less surge, less rainfall, less tornadoes, less wind, and so forth. It was still close enough that, you know, we had some impacts in the city, as y'all know, but our neighbors in orange got hit pretty significantly. And then when you go into Lake Charles, it's catastrophic, you know. So we're very fortunate, as Councilman mentioned in his prayer, and we thank y'all for that because everybody recognizes. However, we had about forty-one thousand, out of our, say, forty-one thousand residents, about five thousand apartments. We've done initial assessments. It looks like only about fifty of those were impacted, with six having major damage or destroyed, and two commercial facilities. Now, we have crews, the city has crews going out and doing detailed assessments, and that's one aspect. And then as people that did evacuate come back, we'll find out more. You know, sometimes you can look at the outside and you don't see anything, and then you find out that maybe something happened up in the roof, and you go inside and your ceilings are down and the floor. I mean, y'all been through this. So it's going to take us a little more time, probably a week or two. We're hoping no more than a week to get those detailed assessments complete, but we'll have to play that by ear. Some of the things take technical expertise to go assess and see, you know, is it repairable? Does it have to be replaced? And that kind of thing. We estimate about forty thousand cubic yards of mostly vegetative debris. And you think, y'all were witness to Harvey and Amelda, we probably had about sixty thousand yards in Amelda. So that sounds for this somewhat light impacts that we've realized, that tells you vegetative debris is not as compacted and everything, it takes a lot of space, but it can be reduced. And, you know, we have an exceptional crew in solid waste led by Benji Williams and his staff, and they do a phenomenal job on our trash every day, and y'all know that routinely they're able to, you know, beat the clock on getting things cleaned up. They were already out there Friday. To date, they've cleaned up about six thousand yards, over two hundred yard loads. We're hoping to be complete with our third pass by, within about three weeks. We would hope to be through our first pass by the end of this week. Again, that's an estimate. I don't want y'all to hold me to it if they're a day or two off, but, you know, as much experience as they have, not only cleaning debris, but assessing damages, we're hoping that that's a reasonable projection. Out of our seventy-six or so lift stations, we had fifty power got knocked out. You know, most of those either came back up. We're working our standard plan for, you know, pumping them down, but there's, it looks like maybe four of them, and I'm sure Bart can, or Molly can go into, I guess, Bart can go into the details if needed, but, you know, what we have to do is we have to assess this stuff and make sure how bad is it? Is it repairable, or do we have to replace a pump or something like that? But we're working that closely. We also have one, unfortunately, one hurricane fatality, or what may be a hurricane-related fatality. You know, a lot of people, and I've seen this with my own eyes, they're just using some unsafe practices when they start those generators. I've seen them, you know, in garages only slightly raised, and they're pumping that carbon monoxide around. If it can get in your house, or it can do something, it's just really important. There's been a lot of messages. We hit the ground before even the evacuation was lifted. We started pushing out safety messages. Y'all probably heard the judge's voice on a number of calls. Everybody's been trying to get the word out, but unfortunately, we didn't get hit hard like some people, and I don't think the autopsy's complete, but unfortunately, it looks like we had at least one person using unsafe practice. And, you know, we just really need to urge our people to be careful with that. Now, of the approximately nine hundred and fifty citizens we evacuated from Beaumont and North Jefferson County, about eighty-eight were medical-related. We were able to get about a third of those, what we call general population, back on Friday, and the rest came back of the general population. We were able to get them back by late Saturday night. However, we still, as Councilwoman Muton knows, because she's been personally working with some of these people, and we really appreciate your help, and it is a team effort every level of the city, is that we still are working with the state and the health department, and the, or rather, the state health services and the state division of emergency management to bring our medical people back. At first, we had some issues with dialysis. You know, one of the things we have to do when we initially come out of an impact is make sure our critical infrastructure is in place. And one of the critical factors is not just whether you have water, sewer, or power, some of the little things like meals on wheels, dialysis, that, you know, there's some key things that we have to have in place. So what we did is we asked that nobody with dialysis would be brought back from their shelters until we had that service available. And Sunday morning, we were able to confirm that all our locations were up, and so we're asking for them to be repatriated now, and we're working with the state, and they work directly with the hospitals and so forth, and that'll take a few days, but we're working it really hard. And, you know, we really want to thank our partners for an extraordinary collaboration and support in this event. You know, a particular note, I can't name everybody but BISD, they're always there for us with transportation, facilities, staff, security. I mean, you know, it's nice to be able to pick up the phone, and, you know, it's not, you know, a whole bunch of, you know, it's pretty much what do you need? Yes. You know, and I appreciate the superintendent, Chief Marlborough, over there, and the partnership that you've established with all these partners, because, you know, we have multiple calls a day with energy, we have, you know, that personal contact. We try to stay as close in touch as we can. We had hospitals providing us space for some of our employees, and, you know, we've used that agreement several times, but it's nice to have partners like that. And, you know, we just have great employees and departments, and that team concept kept our citizens safe. So with that, I'll move into reasons that we would make a recommendation to y'all that you leave the declaration in place. As I mentioned, we still have damage assessments to complete. Some of our items, such as, you know, maybe some pumps at lift stations may need urgent replacements. It's critical that we get this stuff fixed. I mean, we've still got stuff potentially out there in the Atlantic. We want to get this stuff fixed as soon as possible, and with the competitive bidding options that are able under declaration, that gives us some latitude. We also have, as the mayor mentioned and others, we have power outages still. We have, you know, a tight system with energy right now. We need to be really careful that we're not overloading that aspect. That power outage affects traffic signals. You know, it affects businesses being available to conduct things, and some citizens obviously are displaced or are on generators and other things. So, you know, we also need to complete this return of the medical functional needs. I mentioned that it'll take a few more weeks probably to finish the debris cleanup, and, you know, we just want to make sure that the citizens, I think the declaration itself provides some understanding by the citizens that there's still hazards out there, and we need to get some things in place, make sure they're repaired. And with that, I just want to mention that, you know, this great team has the leadership of a great mayor and a manager, and we appreciate that. And as that team, we're working hard to recover quickly. That's my comments.
Thank you so much, Tim. We appreciate you too. Of the items that I'm going to ask the city attorney in a minute to present, or the city manager will, and then you'll do the legal part, right, Mr. Cooper? So if anybody has any questions of what we've talked about with Tim, please feel free. Okay? Good, very good report. Thank you so much. So who's going to, we have a first item. Are you going to lead it?
I can do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Get this mask on. The first item on the agenda is to consider an ordinance, and its title, an ordinance extending the declared state of disaster for the city of Beaumont, Texas, resulting from the imminent threat of hurricanes Marco and Laura. And if you were to call on Monday, we will be, we will face with the impacts of two hurricanes, Marco and Laura. And the mayor, as the emergency management director and her authority given to her by the state, issued a proclamation declaring a local state of disaster for the city of Beaumont, resulting from the imminent threat of widespread or severe damage, injury, loss of life, or property from hurricanes Marco and Laura. And as we've been through these disaster declarations before, the state says that that order is only to be in effect for seven days unless it, and/or until it is extended by the city council. And that is why we are here today, to ask that you extend this declaration of disaster resulting from the impacts of Hurricane Laura, not necessarily Marco. And with that, we would ask that you approve that ordinance.
Okay. And the next one is the emergency powers that we talked about before, so this one is just for the declaration.
This is just the declaration.
Okay. Is there any questions, Council?
I've got a question, Mayor.
Yes.
So assuming number one passes and number two fails, what does that do?
That means you have a declared disaster with no powers. The powers that would remain, and those powers were amended, and the powers that were, and they were amended to remove the curfew, as well as the restriction of the movement of people and occupancy of premises. So the powers that would remain would pertain primarily to discontinuance of hazardous utilities. Explosives is there, but we would recommend that explosives be removed. Price controls would be, would remain, as well as competitive bidding regulations.
I have some questions on the competitive bidding. What specific items are we talking about on that?
Probably lift stations, but go ahead. Do you want to, or Bart, either one? Oh.
We don't have anything in line to purchase right now that just gives us the flexibility. We know we have some problems with our lift stations, and so Bart and those employees are out in the field and discover something, and it's greater than fifty thousand, we can move on it quickly and get it repaired or whatever needs to be done. If you don't have these powers in place, then you have to go through competitive bidding and holds it up, and then take weeks by the time we.
We could have sore problems with our citizens, could have sore problems if that's the case.
Well, no doubt about it. I mean, we.
What else do we think it could be besides lift stations?
I don't, can't, I can't think of anything right now.
The only two major things I have right now are intersections of lift stations, but I don't think the cost of the intersections is going to be that great. There'll mainly be lift station pumps, potentially one generator, but that's probably a longer-term issue.
Can we put limitations on this just for lift stations?
Why would you want to do that, Councilman, when you don't know what you're going to discover out there in the field? What are you worried about?
Because I don't. One, I'm worried about just leaving an open checkbook, because I don't think it's, I think we're all here in town, and we can approve this stuff on a twenty-four-hour notice if we call a special meeting.
You can't, because you can't go out for bids. You can't go out for bids and get things repaired.
Most of these lift station pumps and stuff are fairly readily available, and they're not fifty thousand dollar pumps.
How about if you hired a contractor to come in and make the repairs, and it was greater than fifty thousand? Let's say it was at the sewer treatment plant itself.
How many lift stations do we know of that are damaged now?
Four. I believe it's four.
I think four.
Some of them are on temporary, but I believe it's four.
There are three that I know of currently that have significant damage, terror, fire, area, and prison pump stations.
And what's the quickest you can do a competitive bid?
What's that?
What's the quickest you can do a competitive bid?
Quite sixty days by the time you go through the formal process and go to council for approval, would you say? Forty-five?
They average between four to six weeks.
And we can't do it quicker than that?
No, you have to meet state law and go through the guidelines.
Yeah, you have to solicit, you have to prepare specifications, solicit in the newspaper, publish it, and then receive the bids, and then review the bids.
I have a question.
Okay, were you finished?
I'm finished.
Well, it relates to Councilmember.
But you know what? Before we do, I'm sorry, I didn't get a motion. Can I get a motion on this item, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Please go ahead.
My comment relates to Councilmember Neal's concerns. If we found that there was a need for an emergency repair to a lift station, and we had not this in place, could we not convene a council meeting and do it on an emergency basis and relieve ourselves from competitive bidding?
Only if you had a declared emergency, a declared declaration in place, could you do that. If you didn't have one in place, you just couldn't come and go around the competitive bidding statutes.
But my question is, could we declare an emergency if we found that our pump stations were not able to be repaired without going through the competitive bidding process, which would stretch it out, as you said, forty-five to sixty days? Could we declare an emergency for that purpose to shorten that timeline?
I'm not sure that.
Considering it's a public health, safety issue.
For purposes of disaster, the mayor has the authority to declare that disaster. You have the authority to extend it. If you're talking about public health matters, that would be something different.
So your answer is we could not do that?
I didn't say I couldn't. You couldn't. I just said it would be different. I'm not sure if you could or not.
So you don't know?
I'm not sure if you could or not.
Well, for one thing, we have been through this, I don't know how many times, in the last ten, twelve years, and we've never really had a question that it wasn't the right thing to do, so I'm somewhat confused as to this time why that is, because I don't think that we've ever been accused of spending money unless we needed to do so, and this is all about making sure that our citizens have what they need, and we don't go down. Anybody that's been out of power for as many days as I have and other people recognize how important that is, and we know how important. And we know how important our sewer has been and, and that it's in a fragile state right now. And I think that we need to do that. The same with electricity. Our power, I see, our power is, is important as well. And we have still 3,000 citizens without power.
I have another question, mayor.
Mayor? Yes, go ahead, please. And I'll go back.
Well, taking into account that this is going to affect sewer, and as you just stated, we've had so many problems with sewer. We've had so many citizens to come in and voice their concerns about the sewer that if this, if the lift pumps and the lift stations are affecting the sewer, it's no reason for us not to extend it.
Okay, Councilmember Getz and then Councilmember Neal.
So putting aside for the moment the question of the need to possibly put a, suspend competitive bidding. Other concerns I have with the emergency powers, and the city attorney addressed one. He's recommending that we take out the explosives, which would prohibit, as it stands right now, the sale of firearms or ammunition. So we're, I'm assuming.
Are you on the next item right now?
Um, he mentioned it, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Well, actually, mayor, the motion and the second that's on the floor pertains to the.
And we'll go to the powers on the next one.
Declaration.
And before we even came in this meeting, we talked about taking that out.
And, and then the other thing is the price.
But that's on the second one.
Yes. And the other thing is the price controls. Because as we all know, the market for gasoline varies daily. And, you know, it, it locks it into whatever it was being sold for. Before the storm, it could actually go down. And they would, under this, the way it's rating right now, would have to sell it for what they were selling it for prior to the storm. I, I don't know that we need to have the price controls at this point because the marketplace does what the marketplace does. I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying about the competitive bidding. And I'm just wondering if there is a need for us to have to act quickly because this emergency state of declared disaster is no longer in effect. If it couldn't also be accomplished by the city council being convened, asked to declare an emergency because of the failure of pump stations and the inability to get competitive bidding repairs quickly done. If we couldn't do that and then bypass the, you know, competitive bidding requirements.
I just, I mean, you can vote against it if that's what you want to do. I just don't understand. I mean, you've been on the council for several of these and it's never been questioned that anybody was going to do anything under the table or wrong. So if you can articulate the reason that we would have to call the entire council in when we have staff that knows what they're doing and have been through this before and are, and they're not going to try to gouge the city. If they would have, they would have already done it.
Thank you, mayor. What do we typically do when a lift station fails?
Repair it.
We put it.
Put it on bypass?
Bypass would be.
And why couldn't we do that on this situation?
We, we actually have one bypassed in place right now. That's part of the process as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please. Yes.
Thank you, mayor. Normally, in times of catastrophic events, it either brings people closer together or it divides them further apart. It depends upon the spirit that a person is looking. We're in the midst of an emergency order at this time. There are other storms approaching ago. We, as council members, we are to be prudent in making decisions for the best interests of our citizens. That calls for a certain amount of respect and trust for the people that we put in place, such as our city manager. Over the years, I've seen at least four or five storms come in. We're getting better prepared. Others across this country recognize that we are prepared. We're better prepared than most cities that face catastrophic events. That's been acknowledged across this country.
Yes.
Because of the things that we do in preparation. Yes, we could hold off and wait to see if we have a, a, a dire need. And it could put us in a time restraint. It could cause our city staff to struggle to implement the procedures that we have in place. I understand questioning. I understand wanting to get answers. But there are individuals in this city that are still without power. Those that are in the older areas of the city have to face infrastructure concerns every day. To add a pandemic into that equation, there are people that fear every time it rains in Beaumont because they don't know if their sewer is going to back up. What we're doing now is giving our chief executive officer the ability to make those decisions at this time. History has shown us, he's doing the things that are in the best interest of the city of Beaumont, and he's been prudent about it. We can sit here and question every move and try to manage the city from this bench, but that's not good for the city. Now, we have a remedy if he oversteps the boundaries. There are some that look fear in the eye and stand up to it with courage to make decisions that they feel are in the right, in the best interest of the citizens. But it's only when you're standing eye to eye with your fear do you exhibit courage. Or you can be a little, you can be petty and question every move that they make, creating additional fear for our citizens. Now is the time for us to be united as a body, representing our people, standing for our people, standing against the fear of storms, standing against the fear of pandemics, standing against the fear of our backup in our sewage system, standing in the fear of the pump systems failing flooding Beaumont. You can stand in the storm and fight, or you can be one that just encourage more fear and pandemonium and chaos in the city.
Okay. So as I mentioned earlier, we've been through this many times. And I think that we've proven to be prudent in what we do. So I think Councilmember Pate has something to say. And then I'm going to call for a vote. I will say this, please keep in mind, this is not about politics. It's, it's not. It's about the well-being and the safety of our citizens. And I don't, I, the last thing I want it to be is politicized because this is about the safety and well-being of our citizens. We have had people working around the clock, doing a great job, keeping our citizens safe. I'm sorry that we had one death, but that's due to, due to using a generator unsafely as we know it now. It could change. But I just think that people's integrity don't need to be questioned and we need to respect each other and the position we've been in. I'm sorry, I've been in this position a very long time. I've sat on this council. I've been a council member, not just the mayor, through them too, many. And I've never seen us questioned moving forward with a disaster declaration when we're in a position like we're in right now. And I'm truly disappointed because this is about the well-being of our citizens, period. And if we look at it that way, there's not one reason, not one, that's been proven or given that is a detriment to extending this, this declaration. The judge has not rescinded his, nor has the governor, nor has the president. Councilmember Pate.
Thank you, mayor. We got some new people that weren't here when we went through some of the previous things. So it's obvious that there can be questions. But I'd ask, Kyle, if you'll take a second. Do you recall us ever having a situation where anything out of the ordinary transpired that would cause anybody to have any questions? Because like I said, since Councilmember Felschaw and Councilmember Neal haven't been here through, Ike, I mean, we go all the way back. But I don't recall anything out of the ordinary that transpired that would cause anybody to have any questions as far as our citizens are concerned, as far as how we handle funds. But since they haven't done this before, that might clarify it for them and make.
That's exactly the point I was trying to make. Thank you very much. But Councilmember Getz has been on the council. Go ahead, please.
Well, I didn't mention him.
No, I, I just say that most of you, and, and I definitely do, trust our staff. They're, they're an excellent group of department directors, division managers. And we have been through this many times, as you know, many storms. We're audited every year. We have rating agencies that look at and rate us every year. We're also, in these events, get reimbursed from the federal government usually. So, you know, if we had never gone through this before, I get it. You know, the council can question me or our staff at any time. We can, we can take it. We can answer any questions. I'd rather you ask the questions because we can definitely answer them. But our staff, again, they know what they're doing. We're not going to go buy things that aren't necessary and needed. Bart Barco, we act, is over logistics. And he's working with Tim every day, working with me, and then to the mayor. And in prior events, councils, without any discussion at all, it's been unanimous every time because they know, they know how these work. And they've authorized us to go take care of business, you know? And there's a lot that comes up after these storms. Not necessarily that we can pinpoint exactly for this one yet, but it gives us, again, the flexibility to do what we need to do to get the city back up and running. So.
It's only been one working day, two working days, although we worked through the weekend. So it's not, it's not like it was three weeks ago. Are you through, Kyle? I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'd be happy to answer any questions they may have.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Manager, I'm not accusing anybody of lack of integrity or, and I'm not suggesting that there might be a misappropriation or misallocation of funds here. So I don't know where that suggestion is coming from. But when you have your city under a declared state of disaster, to me, that perpetuates a state of anxiety and fear amongst the citizens. Now, I understand your reasoning for wanting to have the flexibility to act quickly and suspend the competitive bidding requirements. We, as a council, you know, I think we all appreciate that. The concern I had primarily dealt with some of the emergency powers that flow from having a declared state of disaster. I already talked about them, the explosives, which the mayor indicated they'd already considered, and the price controls. The competitive bidding requirement being part of the emergency powers, if we're talking about having the flexibility to deal with that specifically for the replacement of lift station pumps, I don't have an issue with that. We, as a council, operate as checks and balances. We are suspending that, those checks and balances under this emergency declaration. But you provided an explanation as to why you feel that particular emergency power needs to stay in place. And I don't particularly have a problem with that. The other, the other emergency powers, I do have concerns about.
You didn't have anything else? Okay, go ahead.
Does this, under the powers, does that prohibit them from lowering the price of goods or sales of service? Or does it just preclude them from increasing and price gouging?
It, it's intended to stop price gouging, keep them from price gouging.
Exactly.
But that's not what it says.
But would it stop the sale of gas to be, go down if they were to decide to sell gas cheaper?
It says they may not sell for more than the price the person charged for the goods or services from or after the date of the declaration of the disaster.
So that could go down.
So it basically fixes it as of the disaster declaration time. But we're not on that item yet.
Yeah. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor for item number one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes with one no by Councilman Neal. Next item, please.
Okay. Item number two is an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Extending the Emergency Powers as amended for the city of Beaumont, Texas relating to the emergency management necessitated by Hurricane Laura. And as I indicated earlier, the original emergency powers which you have before you were amended to rescind the curfew that had been previously adopted. It was a dusk to dawn curfew that began on Wednesday and was rescinded on Thursday after dawn.
At, at 10:00 a.m.?
At 10:00 a.m.
When the judge did it.
At the same time as the mandatory evacuation order was rescinded, as well as the movement of people and occupancy of premises, which was a hand in glove to the curfew provision. That was also removed as part of the amendment. And the explosive provisions probably should come out. And that would be a recommendation that you take that out. If there are any other suggestions as to any of the other powers, that'd be up to the council to determine.
Okay. Counsel, is there a motion on the floor for this item?
Some.
Some.
There's a motion and a second? Okay, Tina, got it. Motion, second. Okay, you have a question?
I do. I don't think that there's a need for price controls at this point. We need to let the marketplace do what the marketplace does. And I would request that that be rescinded as well. With regard to the competitive bidding regulation, will council be notified if there is any attempt to purchase something without going through the competitive bidding regulation? Even though you might have the authority to do that, will council be notified if that is being done?
We can definitely do that.
Okay, so.
Counsel so desires if we put that in the, in the, in the vote.
So I would ask that that be added as a provision in there upon notification to council.
Okay. The only thing I would say about the price, I forgot what it's exactly called, the price gouging.
Price control.
Control is that there are already things in our city that are running out and that will allow for the marketplace to go higher than they were before the, the storm. It does not disallow them from going lower, as I understand it. But it does allow them to go higher. For instance, toilet paper, we're already out again, that kind of thing. So. So just saying, just keep that in.
Well, and building materials and supplies. I mean, what is it gonna hurt if we keep it in there?
How long would this be in place?
Till council terminates it.
We can, we, we're planning to see where we are in assessments and revisit it again. We are gonna do an after um storm action um update for the council at some point, but right now, we're premature because we're not through with the assessments yet, as was mentioned by Camp, Captain Ognacheck earlier. But I ha, I for one do not want to take the price control out because I think that there are certain um stores that may try to go way up on materials that we become short on.
Absolutely.
It works both ways, but I don't think they, if they have, if they want to go down to increase their business, there's nobody that's gonna tell them they can't do that. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Mayor, am I understanding correctly, in order to remove item number four titled explosives, you're gonna need to amend?
Um when the motion, if, if we can put that in the motion, the motion's on the floor, but we can put in there that we would be accepting it based on that recommendation.
The recommendation was to remove explosives.
That, that was already, we had talked about that before this meeting, um just waiting to talk about it. I thought it was gone.
You don't need an action by this council to remove that?
I do not believe so.
I, I would suggest you do.
Uh huh, just to be clean about it.
Yeah, and then we can make that part of the.
Anything we want to change, we need to put that in there, yeah. Okay, is there, um?
So the motion needs to be.
Okay, just one sec. Councilman Getz, what was the other one?
Well, I had a question about the explosives and.
Which we're gonna take that out.
We're gonna take that. Uh we've talked about price controls, and the other one was with competitive bidding regulation, uh provided that council is notified of any uh, any action by the administration uh to purchase something without going through competitive bidding.
Okay, so um there was a motion and a second on the floor. Um I am in favor of leaving it alone and taking out the explosives, but if there's anyone that wants to uh make another amendment, please go ahead.
Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I ask for clarity on the motion that's on the floor.
The motion is just to um, to uh, to, to approve it as written, and so if we are opposed to the ex, correct?
That's not.
My understanding of the motion was to approve it with the exception of explosives.
Of the explosives, okay.
Okay, can I clarify my motion?
Okay, so Councilman Getz has made that, so.
Did he make the motion or second?
He made the motion.
He made the motion.
Okay. I want to clarify my motion to say that I move to extend the emergency powers of the mayor with the exception of uh deleting the powers to control explosives, which would cover firearms and ammunition, and with the provision that any effort by the administration to purchase items without going through the competitive bidding regulation require notification of that fact to the city council.
After the fact?
It can be after the, it can be after the fact. I mean, you, you, you have, you have the power, you have the power to do it, but we just, I just want to have it so that we're notified that that is happening.
Are you not putting price control in there?
No.
Okay. All right, um.
And I'll leave my second.
You'll leave your second? Okay.
So clarification, Mayor, I apologize. We're voting on this, uh, this agenda item, removing number four explosives and asking that we be notified of any major purchases made.
That's what the motion.
That's correct? Okay, thank you.
The explosives were already recommended, yeah. So there, is there any other discussion? There's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of that motion.
As amended.
As amended, which is um to, he took the price control out, but he wants to leave in the notification of uh competitive bidding and also the um.
Explosives.
Remove an explosive.
We already had that, though, yeah. Okay, all right. Um all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, who was no's, please, uh who's ayes, please raise your hand?
Okay, there was, there was a, I apologize, that's why I kept asking for clarification.
Okay.
So I asked the question, we were voting on this item, removing number four and leaving notification in, I mean, leaving, uh, and adding notification that the council be notified. But the price control was also taken out, correct?
No.
No.
Price control is in.
He did not, he originally said it, but then he did not put it in his motion, so he's leaving price control in, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the only, the only, the only item taken out was number four?
Correct.
The explosives and the.
And placing notification of.
Major purchases.
Major purchases.
So that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Which we could get notification at the next council meeting.
Right.
So my, okay.
But I still, I don't, I can't do it.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, clarify, thank you.
All right, all right, so there was a vote, all, the ones in favor, please raise your hand high enough so we can see them. One, two, three, four, five. Opposed, two. Okay, so the motion carries five, two. All right, that concludes our um business items. Um and so is there any citizen who wishes to speak here, or is there anyone here? No? Okay. All right, since there's not, we'll move to council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilman Getz.
I want to compliment the uh employees of the city for the incredible work that they've done, like the mayor. I've seen them out on Sundays working. Uh we were spared, our neighbors to the east were not, there's rescue efforts underway. Uh we need to keep the people and orange sulfur, Lake Charles in our prayers, and uh if anybody can help in any way to contribute to their cleanup, their recovery, I encourage everybody to do so, uh because they've got a very long road ahead of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no comment, thank you, Mayor.
No comment, Mayor.
Okay. Pay, Councilman Pay.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I'd just reiterate uh what Councilman Getz said. We all have a lot of friends uh over on the other side, Sabine River, and uh our friends at Bridge City kinda got, got it on the nose as well. But this, I think this is the first time that Lake Charles has actually been hit by a hurricane. Uh I mean, when Rita hit us, it's the first time in a hundred and fifty years, and I think this is the first time Lake Charles has ever been hit with a hurricane. I know Cameron has, but uh this was a, uh quite a significant uh punch to our friends over there. Uh there's a, uh and for those of us that have close friends over there, uh many of them are gonna be out, they're gonna do exactly the same things we had to go through with Rita and Ike. They're gonna be living someplace else uh for a month or a month and a half until they can finally come back. I do want to compliment our, uh, our good, the folks that work with the city and also our friends at Entergy, because those guys have been working day and night as well. And of course, they move these people around uh to come in and help uh, you know, uh that live somewhere else and uh, and had a chance to meet some of those nice people as well, and they're just, they're really very impressed with our city and the nice people that we have here under the circumstances. Uh but again, I appreciate uh, uh all the folks at Entergy and those folks going the extra effort because uh, uh as the mayor said, if you, if you were without power, it's not fun, uh there's nothing fun about it. Uh and uh not everybody can access a generator, uh so our thoughts and prayers are going out to them because it is hot uh in August, uh and that makes it even uh more difficult because of potential heat exhaustion, much less heat stroke. So make sure that you hydrate yourself uh and drink a lot of water. Uh it really does make a difference. Uh and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um again, um thank you, Tim, uh and Shaquena. Uh thank you for all the time that you all put in to help keep us safe. Mayor, uh you were there the whole time, thank you. Um I thank Chief uh Singletary, Chief White, who were all at the EOC most of the time. Uh I thank all the police officers that were out on the streets, all the firefighters that were out, EMS. Uh I thank those uh employees, the city workers who bagged up sand to give to our citizens. In the last hurricane, I was there helping to bag sand, and that's not an easy job, it's not a fun job. Uh so thanks to those employees, thanks to the uh Parks and Recreation, uh all the administrative staff, uh I, I watched you all work as a unified team, working together, making sure things happened. Uh Carol, uh I thank her for all the work she did in being there. Being there makes you appreciate what it means to have a team working together for a common goal. That makes it a lot easier. And um I have to say that uh I am like many of the citizens, uh am quick to make conclusions, come to conclusions at times, particularly uh in that um I lost power during the storm, didn't get it back till yesterday evening. I began to have questions about uh why is it the first to lose or the last ones to be restored? But it brought me back to something that I think is very important for all of the citizens to understand, and we have to put aside fears. Fears of uh the colors of a person's skin, fears of the color of the uniforms that they might wear, um the fears of the unknown. I've been going to the EOC Command Center many, over the past thirty years, for every storm I've stayed in, and most times I've been hesitant uh because of those that I may have ruffled feathers with or may not be truly uh comfortable with. Uh but I had to move beyond that fear to serve my community and step up, and I had to sometimes look fear in the eye. Those that I know care, don't like me for whatever reasons, I've had to look them in the eye. But I found that one of the things that I failed to do is let those know once I looked in the eye. They say the eyes are the windows to the soul, windows to the spirit. Many of those who I thought were my enemies, I found to be true friends, but fear, that's what's divided our country, that's what's dividing our state, but we can stand against that fear because it is a spirit, and that's not one that our creator gave us. That's what we rationalize from our life experiences, those things that we do. So I'm just saying to, I believe the majority of our peace officers, our first responders, are here putting their lives on the line every day because they care. Unlike what we're hearing across the country, I believe that, and I know that in Beaumont. I was convinced of that. Each time we have to come together in fighting whatever foe we may have, may it be Laura or Ike or Rita or COVID nineteen, we as people come together in times of trouble. The true measure of a man is not where they stand in comfort and convenience, but where they stand in controversy. So with that, I just thank all of our city employees. Thank you, Mr. Manager. You've done a good job of choosing those around you that are competent or beyond competent, and they show it. Thank you for making our city employees comfortable and happy to serve as they do. From the person picking up our garbage, or those getting down in the sewer to unclog our lives, I appreciate them. So with that, I just say thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember, um, you tell.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to say that I am so truly, truly grateful. When you hear on the National Weather Bureau that this is catastrophic and that this uh, that you cannot survive this, that says, that says a lot to, for us as a city, that we missed it by so close to say that our neighbors to the east are so affected right now. Um this is not new to us. Uh we sat in this very same position last September, as a matter of fact, September the nineteenth, uh Emelda hit, so this is not new to anyone on this council. And at the point that I voted today, the way I voted, I wanted to vote so that we could get past uh holding up on this emergency powers. Not that I have never, ever thought that our city manager, who has a record of doing the job that he's, he's done, would not uh comply with this council. He's, he's very quick to say, I work for the council, and thank you, Mr. Manager, for the job that you have done. I want to also say that um I have also stopped and thanked the other electrical workers that are here in our city, and one of the electrical workers said to me, it's very easy to work here. He said, your city is so prepared, and we've been recognized for being prepared, and unfortunately, we've had our shares, our share of storms to practice it. It's not something that we wanted, but at this point, we have it almost down to a fine science, but every storm is different, so you can't use what you use for Emelda, for Marco or Laura, because every storm is different. But for the most part, it's a storm, we have the staff in place, we've done it over and over and over, and we've gotten to a point where we know what to do, our city manager knows what to do, our mayor is there, working, doing what she needs to do at the EOC. I want to thank, thank you, Mayor, I want to thank Tim Ognacheck, thank you so much, Tim. As a matter of fact, as he stated, uh had a situation where someone never even got checked into the AT&T Center in San Antonio and had to be rushed to the hospital. So on yesterday and, and today, we've been on the phone trying to coordinate to get this family possibly to dialysis and get them back to Beaumont because the emergency happened before they could even check them in. So you see us here at a meeting today, but this started weeks ago, as soon as we heard that there were storms out in the Gulf, as there are some right now. But when you see uh the barrier around Sam's warehouse, I know for a fact, I was on the phone with the city manager last Sunday, city manager was on the phone with the attorney because they were setting up to prepare for the storm so that they didn't get washed out again, and so that they could be available to serve the citizens here in Beaumont and southeast Texas. So what you see, when you see or hear us talking about a storm, that's just, that's just a very, very small intricate of what, what's being done, and I'm grateful that I get to serve and I get to help, to help the people to, to. to help the people to, to move forward, to get past all of the problems that occur during a storm. And again, I want to thank the EMS, Energy, also Benji Williams and his staff. They're there as soon as the storm is over. They leave their houses and their families to accommodate all of us and all of the entire city staff. The 3-1-1 people that are manning the phones, coordinating and getting people. At the last minute, I was still on the phone. I think, Mayor, what, seven, eight o'clock? Just still trying to get people out of the city. So it's a lot of things that go on behind the scene that the everyday citizen would never, never know. And then in the meantime, you're trying to work and get your family and get your family safe too. So to everyone, this time, we, we missed the, we missed the bullet. But to our friends in Orange, to our friends in Lake Charles and all of our family, we are there to help get them through this because we know what it's like and we've been there. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I have one more thing. Although she doesn't work for the city, she works for the county, I want to express my thanks, appreciation and admiration to my wife, who serves as Public Information Officer at the county for the countless hours that she spent at the County Emergency Operations Center, dealing with national media. You may have heard her on the Weather Channel and talking to CSNBC and some of the other national news organizations. But she did great work on that and I really appreciate that. And the other thing is a question, why are we not having a city council meeting tomorrow afternoon?
Because we had it today.
There were things on the council agenda that was canceled last week that were not carried forward today.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, you can. I mean, we had staff at the EOC for all week. I doubt we're prepared for it, to be quite frank. But I'll let the, since it's his staff, I'll let the city manager answer that. All I have is, is Captain Ognacheck.
Did not have power at City Hall number one. The employees that put together the agenda, some of them were out of town, didn't get back till yesterday. So, because we didn't have power or the staff to run the agenda, that normally runs the agenda in my office and in the city attorney's office, we did not have a meeting.
I don't think we got power back at City Hall till Saturday night or early Sunday morning.
That's my understanding, sometime late, maybe Saturday.
Because the EOC was also on generative power until then as well.
Mayor, also, I want to thank Bo Alfred and Precinct Four and their staff because they also provided sandbags for, for the precinct. And without that, that part of town would not have had. I mean, we would have been able to come down to the city to, to get that. But Bo Alfred and his staff provided sand and sandbags for the citizens also.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else, City Manager? How about you, City Attorney? Okay, I will. Hopefully, the, the county commissioners will pay tribute to Allison, your wife, Councilman, as we are doing today for our staff. So Councilmember Pate mentioned earlier that, that, and I don't know if this is exactly true, but the historian that he is, I would think it might be, 150 years we went without a hurricane until, since, until Hurricane Rita. Hurricane Rita was in 2005. So if we put that in perspective, and I think that's what most of the people in here are trying to say, and we need to recognize that and pay tribute to these employees that have done this because Captain Ognacheck and I looked it up and we've had 26 disasters declared by the federal government since 1953. 19 of those 26 have been since 2007. There's council members that have been on here before 2007. There were some that were elected in 2007. I was elected mayor in 2007. We have not been totally involved in all of those, all of those disasters because some of them have been oil spills and things on the freeway and things like that, but there have been. So I just, if I seem like I'm trying to say that what a well-oiled machine we have at our Emergency Operations Center and our operations out in the field, when we have a disaster of any kind, that's because I've lived it and many of the people up here with me have lived it and many of the people there have lived it. And I, and as Councilmember Samuel said, this is a time that we pull together. You will either see our citizens pulling together or pulling apart. It's been unfortunate, some of the things that have been said to me that are said on Nextdoor or Facebook, really putting our city employees down, saying that I had power right away, which I didn't. There have just been one thing after another. I would just ask that everyone that, I mean, we should be thanking God that we were not in Lake Charles seat, because we were. And I feel so much for them and for Orange and for Bridge City. And I've talked to all those mayors and all those judges and especially in Texas. And we've offered mutual aid to them and we are trying to work with them as very best we can and we will continue to do that. But I think that if I could ask anything, is when we go through something like this, I bet we got, that first day when Port Neches said they were going to turn their water off at 6:00, I guess they were concerned about encro, saltwater encroachment. We were, our phones were ringing off the wall because everybody thought it was here. So I would just ask that before anything's put out there, that it's vetted. I also hope that anyone up here or out there that ever sits in my seat as mayor, because there will be some, recognizes what it takes if you're going to do a good job at it. It's a lot of time, a tremendous amount of time. And my hope would be that the council that they serve with would be supportive of that. The emergency powers fall on me. And that's why I said this doesn't need to be political, this needs to be about our citizens and getting them back to normal. And I have to say that because I tried very hard through this storm to make sure that all of council was informed with every step that we took. I sent out multiple texts. Kyle sent out multiple emails just to keep everyone informed. And for the most part, I have to say that everyone answered, let me know that I got, they got the message and asked, what can I do to help? And I want y'all to know that I appreciate that very, very much because you really, as Councilmember Samuel said, because he's been in there a lot because along, when I was first, when I was elected in, in May of '07, we got Umberto in September of '07. Then we got Ike in the next year. And I did need help from council members and staff that had been on the council and on the staff for a while because it is quite different. You cannot imagine it until you've lived it. And I'm not saying that about me, I'm saying that about the people that work there. And I did not hear or see one person that I came in contact with through this ordeal that did not have a wonderful attitude with a smile on their face, with a can-do, this is our job, we need to take care of our citizens. And that is the truth. And that says a lot about the leadership in this city. All the way from the city manager to the department heads, to the division heads, to, you know, everyone, even and, and the individuals that work directly for the council. So I just need to say that because, you know, this is really important. This is life or death. We're not talking about, I mean, we, y'all, we could have been in Lake Charles seat. And let's, let's talk about price control a little bit because that came up. And we want to help our neighbors. We want to help the people in Louisiana, in Lake Charles. If we don't, if we have people from, citizens from Orange, from, from Bridge City, from Lake Charles, the Lake Charles surrounding rural areas, they don't have gas stations. They don't have places to go buy generators. They're probably going to come here. And if you think that some people won't take advantage of that, then you're sadly mistaken, I'm sorry, but you are. So we need to keep our price control in place, not only for our citizens, but also for the surrounding citizens who basically have absolutely nothing. Generators on the side of the road for twice the price. I mean, think about that. So I think when we, when we consider these, which is what we do in the EOC, we consider our neighbors as well. Our citizens come first, but we consider our neighbors as well. That's pretty much all I have. I, I do appreciate everything that everyone's done. And I just have to mention again, the, and I wish I knew who he was. I probably should have stopped, but I had hot soup in my car and I was going to come back and he was gone. But I honestly saw a, one of Benji's staff on his hands and knees to make sure he didn't leave any debris on the grass. And before anyone says, that's because they were in your neighborhood, no, they weren't, I was delivering food to someone else. So with that, yes, sir?
Mayor, I did not state, thank you, Councilmember Felschau. Thank you for coming into my ward and walking, knocking on doors, checking out the people of Ward Three. It's greatly appreciated. That's the first time I've had somebody to walk in Ward Three with me, door to door. So thank you.
We were very concerned about some of the people in Ward Three that lived in small houses that might flood. And we knew that our evacuation was not going, it was going well, but not as many people as we wanted it to be. And, and I appreciate y'all responding to that because that was a concern of us.
And that did come from you, you voiced that concern?
And I appreciate y'all doing that very much. And you too, Councilman Felschau. Okay, so with that, I assume that we'll have a meeting next week, right? We don't have any reason not to, we got power now.
Yeah, we're planning to have a meeting next Tuesday.
And we have one in the morning, too.
And we have one tomorrow at 10:00 in here. It's posted, but it's, it's, you know what it's about.
It's an informational meeting.
It's an informational meeting. But we are planning to have a city council meeting next Tuesday, September the 8th.
Okay, all right. And I think, yes, I think we also, don't we have a planning and zoning on the 9th, a special meeting?
I'm not sure about that.
We do, we do. I believe, I'll make sure, but I believe that we have a planning and zoning on the 9th at 3:15 joint. And, and then we'll have the 7th, the council meeting. Thank y'all for coming, we are adjourned.